Hey, we are called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, July 15th, 2024. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet, we are in a troubling weather situation. I've been told we are now under a severe thunderstorm watch until about nine or 10 o'clock, so I just ask everybody don't get too nervous. So we'll have all the radios and all the radars and everything that's available in this room to know what's happening, so we'll tell you if something goes wrong. I appreciate the good efforts of everybody coming out on a bad night like this. I know there's a couple of special items on the agenda that we want to pay some attention to. So tonight, we just ask for a special blessing upon our community and the world around us. We ask that specifically that a blessing be showered on each and every one of the men and women who defend the liberties of the United States of America in uniform and foreign soils. And we just ask that those in our community who are suffering from various illnesses or infirmities, that they are on their road to recovery. We ask for direction and ideas and visions by the members of the city council as they act on the actions of business tonight, knowing that in their hearts and minds, each one is here to do what is in the very best interests of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Saron, would you lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Has the city clerk to please call the roll?
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Vacancy?
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Saron?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
Thirteen present, one vacancy.
You have the necessary quorum to conduct business. I would remind anybody who's going to speak to us tonight to please come forward and use the microphone, because this is all being recorded on BATV, and we want to make sure that everybody can hear who's at home watching it on TV. Moving to item five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything? Don't see it. Okay, moving to item six, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Beck, would you please present this, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the building reports for June 2024 and the May financial report. And for approval: July 5th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,024,718.39. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,702,823.47. The city council minutes from July 1st, 2024. Ordinance 2024-50: Grant of a variance for a garage at 1111 North Washington Avenue, Steve Vassillion, Vassillion Architects applicant. Resolution 2024-96-R: Authorizing execution of a professional service agreement with Housia Levine and Associates for the South River Corridor Study. Resolution 2024-100-R: Adopting the latest version of the Kane County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Resolution 2024-104-R: Approving a contract with SemperFi Landscaping, Inc. for the Fox River Stabilization for an amount not to exceed $565,175, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Resolution 2024-102-R: Authorizing the purchase of 10 Avon C-50 protective masks from Protech in Berea, Ohio. Resolution 2024-97-R: Adopting a local sourcing policy. Resolution 2024-98-R: Authorization for a budget amendment for a food pantry for $2,100,000. And for approval: The Cow Executive Session Minutes for April 1st, 2024, on the purchase or lease of real property. The Cow Executive Session Minutes for May 6th, 2024, on litigation. The Cow Executive Session Minutes for May 20th, 2024, on personnel. And the city council executive session minutes for July 1st, 2024, on the purchase of real estate. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion, Alderman Beck, second, Alderman Wolf, for the approval of the consent agenda presented. Any discussions? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck? Thank you. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent, one vacancy.
Consent agenda is approved. Okay, moving to the second page of the agenda already. Matters from the, item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wants to speak? Would you come forward, please? Give us your name.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Russo, the president of the Batavia Public Library District. And I'd like you to think back for a moment to the year 2002, if you can. And to help you remember what was going on in that year, Billboard's top band was Nickelback. The animated feature of that year was Shrek, and Wi-Fi internet service was in its infancy. For Batavians, it was a special year because the new Batavia Public Library opened on the corner of Wilson Street and Route 31. On an unusually warm January 27th, hundreds of Batavians lined up around the parking lot to check out their new library. And I know that many of you were there that day. Perhaps you have a memory of that day. I remember the potential and the enthusiasm that everyone was talking about. What would the new library bring to Batavia? Our new library is now 22 years old, and the library board has begun a strategic planning process to envision what the library can bring to Batavia, and the library needs your help to do this. I am here to ask you to complete the library's strategic plans survey. It will ask you about the library's services, programs, staff, and facilities. If you are a library cardholder, we want to hear from you. If you are not a library cardholder, we want to hear from you. Share your ideas about the library so we can better serve your needs. Your participation will shape the library's future. You can get the survey online by going to the library's website and clicking on the survey box in the upper right-hand corner. We'll also be distributing bookmarks that have a QR code that take you straight to the survey. If you would rather complete a print copy of the survey, copies will be available at the library and at various locations around town. The survey only takes about eight minutes to complete, but the information your voice provides will guide the library for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. I've had the opportunity today to spend some time with the Batavia librarian, and she gave me a whole insight into that thing. And it's interesting, the ideas that you're starting to hear and come up with. So I think I encourage all the members of the council to jump in and respond to this, because this is a part of Batavia's future, and we certainly have had a very proud past the last 22 years with the new building. When you think of the thousands of people that have stepped up and been there and admired it, and I've had some old-time Batavians that moved out 30, 40 years ago come back and say, my goodness gracious, what have you done here? And from a positive perspective, that they said they couldn't really believe that Batavia had such a unique and transparent and all-inclusive library facility as had been built. So my hats off to the library board for all the good efforts you've done to put this together, so thank you. All right.
One moment, I think we have one more that wanted to speak.
Oh, you got somebody else? Please.
More public.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Olive Sweda. I'm 11 years old, and I live in the 7th Ward of Batavia. I'm here today to speak to the council members about a change I'd like to suggest for our community. Our city should consider finding alternatives to traditional fireworks. I am bringing this to your attention for three main reasons. First, fireworks impact our environment by causing air pollution with harmful toxins. Second, the noise from fireworks is stressful to animals and our veterans and others with PTSD. Third, fireworks have the potential to cause serious injuries and fire hazards. In conclusion, I'm asking the city to discuss alternatives to traditional fireworks with the volunteer organization Friends of the Batavia Fireworks. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your ideas. Appreciate that. Anybody else? All right. I guess the next one is an oath of office for probationary firefighter, Rocco O'Freddie.
Thank you, mayor, council, friends, family, other members of the public today, also the members of the Batavia Fire Department. This is an exciting day for us. Rocco O'Freddie actually grew up here, Batavia, and he joined the Batavia Fire Department as an explorer. It seems like a long time ago for him, in 2014, not so long for some of us, after attending a career day at the Batavia High School, which shows that does work. We like to see that. He studied fire science at the Fox Valley Career Center, graduating as the brigade commander his senior year in 2019. He officially joined the Batavia Fire Department as a paid-on call in 2020, completing his basic operations firefighter certification with the state of Illinois. In 2022, he attended and graduated from the Southern Fox Valley Paramedic Program at Delnor Community Hospital, and he graduated as valedictorian, humble but won't tell you that. Subsequently, though, he, you know, had to spread his wings. He joined the Memphis Fire Department, where he has worked for the last year and a half, down there gaining an unmeasurable amount of experience. Fortunately, Rocco realized that there's no place like home, and has decided to return to his hometown of Batavia to serve as a full-time firefighter/paramedic. And we, the Batavia Fire Department, could not be more happy or proud to have him back here at the city of Batavia, so. Thank you, Rocco. Mayor, can I do a swearing in for you?
All right, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and please state your name.
I, Rocco O'Freddie.
Having been appointed?
Have been appointed.
To the position of probationary firefighter/paramedic?
To the position of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
The city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
The counties of Kane and DuPage?
The counties of Kane and DuPage.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois?
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of probationary firefighter/paramedic?
Of the position of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my abilities?
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. You're free.
We're just gonna ask you to repeat the oath, if you remember it.
Very happy to be back, everybody. Thank you so much.
All right, item number eight is recognition, as I've done previously with aldermen who've left, with Alderman Dan Chansett of the 3rd Ward. And we had a unique situation occur here because Dan Chansett asked a whole old friend of his, Mark Foster, who used to be the newspaper editor, if he would write his proclamation. So, Mark, would you come up and read it for us?
My pleasure to be here. This is a little longer than usual for your proclamation, so I hope that's all right. Whereas 3rd Ward Alderman Dan Chansett is a longtime Batavian, the son of Marshall and Linda Chansett, who moved here in 1986 from Winfield, where Dan was born on March 21st, 1976. And whereas Dan is a product of Batavia schools, having attended J.B. Nelson Elementary, Grace McWayne 6th Grade Center in its inaugural year of 1987, the old Batavia Junior High School, and Batavia High School, where he graduated with honors in 1994. And whereas during his youth, Dan was active in scouting with the Two Rivers Council as a top fundraiser, day camp counselor, and program assistant, and as a youth facilitator at monthly roundtables, where he helped teach adult leaders how to run engaging troop gatherings. And whereas Dan earned two of scouting's highest honors by being elected into the Order of the Arrow and by achieving the rank of Eagle Scout with Troop 21, which met each week at the Holy Cross Church. And whereas it was at a troop meeting where Dan listened to a presentation by the owner/publisher of the Windmill News, the late Arlene Nick, the first of many mentors and community leaders who encouraged Dan to follow his passion for writing and journalism. And whereas Dan became further enthralled by local government under the guidance of Batavia High School student newspaper advisor, Dan Russo, the first, Dan Russo, who introduced Dan to Kane County Chronicle political editor, Mark Foster, and municipal government watchdog, Brenda Shory. And whereas Dan studied journalism and mass communications at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and over his 10-year career as a reporter, his byline appeared more than 3,000 times in articles published by the Windmill News, the Windmill Herald, the Kane County Chronicle, the Northwest Herald, and the Aurora Beacon News. And whereas Dan was recognized for his reporting by the Illinois Press Association and the Associated Press before pivoting to a 15-year career in banking, finance, business development with JP Morgan Chase Bank, MB Financial Bank, and MBO Harris. And whereas Dan was appointed on May 17th, 2010, to fill a vacancy on the Batavia City Council representing the 3rd Ward. And whereas Dan served for 14 years as an alderman after being elected in his own right in 2011 and winning reelection in 2015, 2019, and 2023. And whereas Dan brought his real-world experiences to advise the city as a subject matter expert on various topics. And whereas during his tenure, Dan served as chairman of the Public Utilities and Government Services Committees, where he provided leadership, facilitated discussion, and saw consensus on matters central to the city's operation, including our electrical utility and the annual budget. And whereas Dan actively promoted Batavia's interests with regular lobbying trips to Springfield through his participation with the Metro West Council of Government, which represents the collective interests of nearly 1 million voters in northern Illinois. And whereas through his lobbying efforts, Dan worked with city and state officials to help procure funding to replace unsafe lead water service pipes in Batavia. He also worked with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to restart discussions for funding an engineering solution to the problem posed by Batavia's failed North Dam. And whereas Dan has been a tireless supporter of his neighbors, especially with respect to residents in the Carriage Crest neighborhood, who he worked closely with for years to procure funding and find an engineering solution with Public Works to put an end to perennial stormwater flooding, excuse me. And whereas Dan often worked behind the scenes to help find consensus for high-profile and controversial votes, including the recent housing proposal by Pol-T Homes, as well as recent county-led initiative to eliminate the sharp bend in the road west of Batavia Avenue at the Fabian Parkway Bridge, which has made that intersection one of the most dangerous in the region. And whereas Dan has always been a fierce advocate for the professionalism, independence, and integrity of city department heads and city staff in their efforts to deliver on the policy decisions of the city council. And whereas Dan has championed diversity and inclusion initiatives on behalf of marginalized residents, including outreach and advocacy efforts on behalf of LGBTQIA+ community and people of color, even in the face of threats and adversity from those opposed to the ideas of fairness and equality, liberty, and justice, which Batavia has a proud history of supporting on behalf of everyone, dating back to the Underground Railroad and various other movements to promote basic civil rights. And whereas Dan has always enjoyed taking time out for his semi-annual Coffee with Your Alderman visits to the homestead, which has been an important outreach to our community's living historians to understand where we came from in order to better understand where we are going next. And whereas Dan's resignation and departure from the city council is bittersweet, and in that we will miss his thoughtful commentary, but we look forward to the possibility of him returning someday to public service as he takes time off to pursue opportunities to kick the tires on new properties and to build his innovative company, Shop the Warehouse. Now, therefore, the city of Batavia does hereby congratulate and thank Alderman Dan Chansett for his 14 years of service to our community. We wish him good luck and hope that fortune and success are showered upon him as he follows his dreams and embarks on his future endeavors.
Would somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion, your honor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Wolf and seconded by Alderman Lehman. Clerk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Proclamation is approved. Mr. Chansett's at the back of the room, and I'd like to invite him up. You would? My secretary tells me that in frame this thing, this is one of the biggest challenges they had to get all this on one page. Yeah, okay, well, it's here, and it's all here, and thank you for all your years of service and for all you've done to kind of stir the pot in Batavia in the right direction. And you really have made some motions and movements that have probably made Batavia a better place for this community to live and work in. So on behalf of the citizens, I thank you, and I'd like to present this to you. Would you like to make any comments?
I'll start crying if I don't stay up here too long, so I would just simply say, when I'm, when I was sitting at that seat, what I liked to do was always thank the spouse or thank the family, because they're the ones that actually gave the true sacrifice to people in public service, be it in the police department or the fire department. I guess I'd like to say thank you to everyone in my family for understanding the amount of time and the passion that I had for this, because I guess I was on loan to the city, to them, so thank you very much. And to the barman heads, I'm gonna miss being your advocate. I'm gonna miss working with you, and I'm really gonna miss everything that just happened to me. Dinners at the governor's mansion and closed sessions and hearing about something before everybody else did and fighting the urge to call the newspaper and leak the story. I've learned something from every one of you, and I really appreciate the time that you took to teach me by yourself and share your passion. I am flabbergasted and so happy that Mark Foster and Dan Russo are in the audience tonight, of all of the possible mites. Batavia schools did a good job, and I appreciate Mr. Russo for sticking by me, even when we didn't see eye to eye on things, or your wife on unrelated matters, but you also taught me diplomacy, and I sharpen those skills here. So thank you, everybody. I'm gonna miss you a lot.
Thank you again. This is, I'm very happy to have this item on the agenda, because for a number of months now, we've had a Historic Preservation Commission that didn't have an architect. And the rules are, we're supposed to have one on, but you gotta find an architect that lives in Batavia to qualify to be on the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'm told, or not told, I was told that Bill, I want to say this last name right, Ma- Me? Mas?
Mauer.
Mauer. Bill Mauer is a licensed architect. He lives up on Windsor Lane, and he's related to some prominent Batavians. I'm not gonna say who, but you all know who I'm talking about. But anyway, I think he's gonna be a fabulous addition. Scott Bunnion and I spent an hour with him last week talking about the role of it, and I guess I would just ask for the councils make a motion and approval for Bill Mauer's Historic Preservation Commission appointment for a term that will expire in 10/21 of 25.
So moved.
Second.
No motion and second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Congratulations, Bill. Welcome aboard. Thank you for being willing to serve. All right, next, we're gonna go to Main Street. We what?
Number 11.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, we have a presentation on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project by Jerry Ruth of Trotter and Associates. Let me just tell you, Jerry is one of the answer men for this town and the success we've had at that treatment plant. He's done a wonderful thing down there to the degree that I got other mayors in the region calling me up, wanting to come down and look at none other than the Batavias Water Treatment Plant, because others who know what they're talking about have been in there and seen it and say, this guy has done a wondrous job. So Jerry, welcome, and thank you for all you're doing, and will continue to do, so turn it to you.
Thank you very much. Jerry Ruth, 1214 Betterham Lane. Here's the update for the project we're doing at the wastewater treatment facility for the month of July. So Water Street is open. That's the biggest news. So yes, we finally have that whole thing open. There's still a bike path reroute, a detour around the construction zone, but it's open again, so pedestrian and bicycle traffic can freely pass through the detour, definitely in safety. The excess flow diversion structure, there's a lot of construction we're doing inside the fence now. Off-site stuff is, for the most part, completed. So we have a couple structures we're working on, the primary clarifiers and the control building for those structures. Ultraviolet disinfection building and the headworks are ongoing. There's some critical valves and minor piping that we're doing at some of the final clarifiers. There's a long retaining wall that's gonna support our new bike path along the west side of Pomarco Drive for that bike path realignment, and that's ongoing. And we put topsoil along the sidewalks on Water Street. That was requested in the last meeting. I made sure it got done. Here's some photos of our progress. This is photos of the proposed UV disinfection building. It's tucked away in the back. You'll probably never see it unless you're on a tour with me or some of the staff at the treatment facility, but you can see we're putting in the superstructure, have it insulated, the vapor barrier's on the outside, and the roof is on, so we're essentially watertight. Here's a photo, an aerial photo from June 3rd, and a month later, it looks very much different. So inside, we're putting the FRP facing on all of the walls. It's gonna be a humid space, so that's the facing that we selected for that, as well as for the ceiling. Here's the progress at the headworks building. This is the northwest corner of the site. Concrete, concrete, concrete. You know, it's a very large concrete structure, and we're trying to get as much concrete
You know, it's a very large concrete structure, and we're trying to get as much concrete work done until the snow flies. And the contractor's goal is to complete most of his structures and then take the winter off from winter concrete and aims to save money because winter concrete is expensive. So here's an aerial photo from a month ago. And the biggest change that you see here is the concrete slab on the ground floor has been placed. They're now putting the supports for the elevated slab for the upper deck or the second level of this building. And they started working on that this week. Roadway improvements, I mentioned, we paved Water Street. We also did some curb work along the north end, basically at the intersection of Water and Main Street. That's in the way of people. There we go. The retaining wall on Pamako Drive, I'll have a bunch more pictures. You're not really seeing a whole lot now except for the subgrade work digging down along the entire swath of what will be each side of the bike path. And you'll see the starting of the beautiful retaining wall that we're putting to support the bike path as it goes up in elevation to meet up with Water Street at the north end of our construction site. Here's a view, an aerial view from above Flynn Street facing west. You can see the length of this first retaining wall that's on the low side of the bike path. And there's another retaining wall that's on the west side of the bike path that's further on the left of the screen. They'll get to that next. Drain valves in these clarifiers, they were last worked on when the clarifiers were installed back in the 80s, so they needed to be replaced. They're having issues with operations, so we dug down about 15 feet and got those valves right next to the structure, replaced them. Replacing the concrete slabs for some of the foundations for our new primary clarifier control building. This is the deepest dig for the project, so they had to implement pretty heavy dewatering in order to get it done. Here's an aerial photo of the site and the area near the northern end of the site from a month ago. And here's that same view from last weekend. So that dig is pretty deep. On the right side, you see a sediment basin. It's basically a large storage container that bring out, they pump the groundwater into it. It settles out the fines before it is released into the river. Cost update. Roughly 30% completed based on days remaining in the schedule. Total invested in the improvement so far for construction, roughly $19.2 million. Change order, last meeting, there was requested that I just go over a couple of the items for the summary of this change order since $60,000 on a $43 million project is not necessarily that huge. But if you see the breakdown here for the 19 different individual contract modification requests, you'll see that there was a lot of back and forth. Some building permit requirements that weren't brought into the project until after it was bid. Some additional storm sewer, water main and sidewalk improvements, as well as paving on Water Street south of Union Avenue was a large adder. A couple of large credits included some changes to the electrical work on Union that the city electric division actually had to do on an emergency basis, so it reduced our scope. Minor onsite changes, there is a myriad of them. I won't go into too many of the details for those. But the largest credit that we see here was the change from a jack and board installation method for a 30-inch sanitary sewer going from Pamako Drive to Water Street, changing that to open cut, you know, removing a couple cast-in-place concrete retaining walls, cutting across a driveway and installing it. And that was required because the bedrock was found to be higher than the borings would have indicated. It came up a little bit faster than we anticipated. So we had to use a different method, and it saved the city a couple hundred thousand dollars. Any questions about CMRs in front of you?
Shows what a good job you guys have done, to be able to do that and move that around and find a solution that actually saved money.
Yes. Yeah, and we worked closely with the contractor to make sure that everybody was still, you know, time and material, nobody's at risk, let's just get it done the right way. And a schedule update, unfortunately, I don't have the contractor's schedule for July yet. However, in our weekly meetings, they have not expressed anything except that they are on track, they are on target, and they will meet their deadlines and milestones. Specifically, the bike path being completed prior to August is coming up quick. And so that's what they're focusing on now as much as possible. And that is your update. If I have any more questions?
Questions? Thank you for doing such a nice job.
Yeah, thank you very much. Stay safe tonight, everybody.
Okay, moving then to Main Street. Do we have somebody from Main Street here?
Hi, I'm online today.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Laura's pulling up my presentation really quick. I wanted to, being the start of the second half of the year, I thought it would be a good time just to go over the, our first year, first half of the year review. So, once it gets here. All right. So basically, I want to start with, we've featured six businesses in the Meet the Merchant post this year. This is shared to our social media, our website and our newsletter. And this is, we're doing this to help create connections between the community and the businesses. We've created the Wednesday Night Farmers Market. That's been a really nice addition, a much smaller version of our Saturday market, but it's been well attended so far and the vendors have been happy. We implemented the Boardwalk Shop, Shop the Town, Shop the Boardwalk, Shop the Town Weekly Raffle. This allows us to collect zip codes from those shopping at the Boardwalk as well as encouraging those shoppers to move around town. And we've collected 162 unique zip codes that have shopped the Boardwalk this year. So next slide. Then we've also created the Downtown Restaurant Guide, which has had over 1,200 unique scans and featured 34 different businesses, downtown businesses. We presented at the Main Street America Conference and awarded the bid to host Illinois Main Street Conference in November. And this is just to help gain additional exposure for Batavia. Then we've also featured 12 different businesses in our Then and Now post, and that again is to help create connections between the downtown businesses and the community. And then we started our three-month regional marketing plan. So far, we've had over 50,000 impressions on the radio, 1,400 social media reach, and almost 13,000 impressions on our Google Ads. Our newsletter enrollment has increased by 45% since the beginning of the year, and our open rate is consistently over 40%, which is a really nice, it's a high for an industry high. Well, it's, it's good. Anyways, this is done to help, we've done this by collecting emails at the farmers market and through that Boardwalk raffle. And it's just an easy way for us to share the downtown happenings about what the, all the different businesses are doing. And then finally, just wanted to remind everybody that Cocktails in the Park, our annual fundraiser, is on July 27th. We hope that you guys can make it. It's from 7:00 to 10:00. It's $40 in advance and $50 at the door. And this includes appetizers from 10 different downtown businesses, live music and a whiskey glass that you can take home. So does anybody have any questions?
Hey, Beth, has there been any talk about getting more signage for the Boardwalk shops? Possibly, like on the corner, you know, just like more, I don't know, I've been talking to some of the owners and they just feel like, you know, we have the one sign there, but then they, I don't know, they feel like there's not enough.
We have been working with the city to get four additional signs to place on the back of the four shops facing Route 25. And those have been approved and ordered, and they ordered, they should be going up within the next couple of weeks. And those will basically tell the different things that are there, apparel, just different, the different categories of businesses we have. And we're also talking about replacing the open flags at the front that they put out just to a more brightly colored sign and potentially some feather flags, but we're trying to do it and make sure that it still looks not cluttered.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. That's literally exactly what I was looking at and thinking would be a possibility. So I'm happy you guys are doing that. It's great.
Yeah. Good. Anybody else?
Beth, this is Alan Wolf.
Hi, Alan.
Just a quick question on how we think the table locations and amounts are down on river now that we've had a month or so to see how those are used or utilized. Do you feel like there's enough down there and are they in the right spots?
So far, I haven't had any negative complaints from people since we've put additional tables out. I think it's been good. I would really have to go back and ask the market managers, but we do, we haven't received any complaints from them.
Just wanted to ask. And I think that the zip code reach that you put out there is kind of amazing when you look at other marketing stats for other businesses or companies and how they look at that stuff. That number is just amazing to me that that's what gets drawn into this city on a weekly basis.
Yeah, it really is amazing.
And again, we just have to figure out how we can get more people to spend more time in other places than just the market and the shops.
Yep. We're open to any ideas that people have. We're doing everything that we know to do, and that's really what that regional marketing strategy is all about, is trying to move people around the downtown district.
Great. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, I think that what you guys have done at Main Street this year has really helped to bring the crowd to Batavia. And I don't know if I've ever seen as many people here for as many different events with your involvement in as we seem to be doing it. So you've got a magic formula, I think, so keep it up and expose it because there does seem to be high praise for the work of Main Street and trying to bring Batavians out into the community and bringing new people in to find out what we're all about. And I've had several people call the mayor's office and want to know, you know, what time do things start on Saturday morning and all this other good stuff. So you're doing the right stuff, so thank you for all you've done.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Moving then to item 13, which I guess we're going to ask for a motion to waive formal bidding on Resolution 2024-101-R. Who's the alderman that's pushing to run in this? Scott? Is there, nobody wants to take it on?
I'm the city services, but I can make that.
This is for purchases of 16 Tasers under a certification plan, the Taser 7 certification
plan that's in the next resolution. And because of the amounts and the need for them, as quickly as we do need them to replace very out-of-date and old units, we need to waive formal bidding on this because it is pretty much, I think, a one-source system that we have and that we've used in the past and that we want to continue using. So that's why we had to do that, and they had to, you know, move this around to get money out of the budget from other places to be able to actually make this happen this year. And it is something that, from a public safety standpoint, they don't have to use them often. A lot of time, it's just the threat of that being out and shown that de-escalates a situation that keeps it from getting worse. So, you know, from the information that we got from the chief at the COW meeting, I think this is a really important thing that we move forward with. And, you know, I would make the motion to waive the formal bidding for this resolution.
Message of this motion will move some money around, basically.
Yeah. Within the department, we don't think there's going to be a need for a budget amendment. If that does come to that, it'll be for something else later in the year that we'll have to decide at that point. But right now, it looks like that it won't increase the budget on the police side.
Worth noting, I think we're getting a better deal this time, too. Because we're getting the reloads.
The reloads.
The package or something.
The recertification every year, all the, it's a total package rather than having to buy it as we go along. So I think it's a much better thing. And I think it's something that has evolved over time that we've used this. I think it's also true with our, the body worn cameras that we have, you know, to learn different things about this technology as it moves forward, to be able to have the support that we need for it to keep it current and to not let it get as far out of date as it has. Because everybody in, almost every department in this city that I've ever worked with brings the last pennies out of every piece of equipment they have. It is, to me, just amazing sometimes.
We have, you were making a motion?
I made the motion to waive formal bidding.
Second by Alderman, Malay. Any further discussion? Kurt, call the roll, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
All right, motion's approved. Move to 15, the administrators report?
Oh, we have to, we have to approve that resolution. That was just a way formal bidding.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. Okay, now we have another, you want to make another?
Now we get to spend the money. I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2024-101-R, authorizing purchase of 16 Exxon Taser Model 7, conducted energy weapons under the Taser 7 certification plan from Exxon Enterprises Incorporated.
Second. By Alderman, or Wolf, second by Alderman, Malay. For the approval of Resolution 2024-101-R. Any further discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
All right, motion's approved. Move to 15, the administrators report?
Oh, we have to, we have to approve that resolution. That was just a way formal bidding.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. Okay, now we have another, you want to make another?
Now we get to spend the money. I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2024-101-R, authorizing purchase of 16 Exxon Taser Model 7, conducted energy weapons under the Taser 7 certification plan from Exxon Enterprises Incorporated.
Second. By Alderman, or Wolf, second by Alderman, Malay. For the approval of Resolution 2024-101-R. Any further discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, administrators report, Laura?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have received three applications thus far for the vacancy for third ward aldermen. And we will be conducting interviews of those candidates and any others that we receive on July 30th. And that person will then be appointed, the selected person will then be appointed at the city council meeting on August 5th. Last Wednesday, we had a kickoff with FGMA. You'll recall that the consultant who was hired to do the space needs analysis for the police department, so that project is underway. Very shortly, they are intending on doing stakeholder meetings, so I expect that many of you will be invited to that. Saw good news in the newspaper that our Coles is one that will be getting a Babies Are Us, which is great because our Babies Are Us standalone store closed along with all of the rest of the Are Us corporations around the area. And so it's, you know, this, this great new thing that retail is doing of sharing spaces. And so we're excited that they'll be coming to our Coles. There are two upcoming Special Olympics events. One is on July 23rd. That's Tip a Cop, and that's going to be at Riverside Pizza. And the Batavia Police Department will be serving your tables from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. to support the law enforcement torch run. And then on August 17th, there's going to be a Battle of the Badges softball tournament. It's to raise awareness and funding for Special Olympics. That's going to be held in St. Charles. We'll have more details. You can check out the Batavia Police Department Facebook page in the coming days for more details on that. And I'd just like to say, I think this is an incredible accomplishment. You know, we had advertised testing for police, and we received 70 applications. And I think it's both a testament to some of the efforts that the police department and human resources have made to get that opportunity out there in front of people who maybe they haven't before. But I think it also speaks to our police department being a destination employer and really proud of them for their efforts. In Public Works, on July 16th at 4:00 p.m. in this room, we're going to have an information meeting for the residents who are in the next round of the lead service line replacements so that they can understand more about that project and what the, the schedule for that is. We're right on target with the Prairie and Wilson Streets road reconstruction, majority of which will be finished this year, except for the, you know, top paving and the refurbishing of the grass and things like that in the area. We're going to have a drivable road this winter, it looks like, which will be just awesome. And then I just wanted to point out, you know, both for the Fourth of July and for these serious storms that we've been having, I just want to recognize all of our first responders, whether they be the police department, the fire department or Public Works, that, you know, they are out there working on days like the Fourth of July when everyone else is celebrating. They give up a lot of time with their families to do that. And then in these incredible storms, when people need them the most and they're in danger, they are there for all of us. So just like to say thank you.
Questions, Laura? Or the Peeper?
I just had a quick question about the Prairie-Wilson intersection.
Yes.
When is it expected that the north-south portion will reverse?
I'd say by early August, somewhere in that timeframe, roughly. Yeah.
Any questions?
Can we have another update about the road diet?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the staff met with IDOT internal staff last week, and I believe that we have resolved any of the outstanding issues with regard to that project and that we will be able to get our permit soon. But of course, that means that that's only the beginning of us being able to go out for bid and have the letting brought back here for decision-making. Our anticipation is that if the weather holds, that we'll be able to do this project in October. But, believe me, everyone will know when we get that permit from IDOT, that will be celebrated.
If we have to call a special COW meeting to be able to get that in front of us so that we can, okay, whatever Public Works needs to try to get this done this year.
Sounds good.
We'll figure out how to do it.
Thank you.
And I think I have enough support of everybody sitting around here tonight.
Yes.
Lots of head shaking that if we have to have a special COW meeting, if it's an hour after a city council meeting or a week when we don't have one, we'll figure that out and make sure that we get that to happen.
Sounds good.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, very, do we have any other business from anybody?
I just have one thing. I didn't get to say anything when we gave Dan the proclamation, but I will say, you know, and probably just admit this publicly, Dan was a really good sounding board to sit next to grumpy, crotchety me sometimes, to listen to things either before or after meetings or on the phone, driving somewhere, when we would connect to, to be able to have somebody that could listen to some of my rants before they became public was a good thing. And it was really good to have sometimes have somebody else temper that because some of the things I should have responded to, I waited, and Dan was very helpful with a lot of that to, to get that out there. And, you know, to be able to step in last year when I wasn't here is something that I don't have any other way to thank than just to say thank you. That was a really good feeling, knowing that I didn't have to think about that. That was one thing that was not on my mind. And, you know, Dan did bring a lot of diplomatic skills that I will say I didn't have, that I think I learned some from just about everybody that I've ever dealt with on the council.